Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Board of Directors meeting, it's Wednesday, September 28th. I will read the agenda and ask for approval from board members. Item one is public comments. Item two is finance and operations related as in treasurer's report. There are four policies to consider this evening, two to warn and two to adopt. The election of a VSA delegate. I think that's BSBA, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yes.
The consent agenda which includes minutes, warrants, leave, subabsences, retirements, resignations, and a ton of nominations. The superintendent's report, chair's report, any other items to be considered by this board with a final action. And for your information, the budget status report, the enrollment for September, and nominations that have already been approved in the number 19. Is the agenda okay with the board members? Hearing no objection, are there public comments?
Yes.
I see Liz Duffy, please.
I'm not at a place where I can speak. Could you enable the chat feature?
We do not put chat on during meetings.
Okay, all right, then I'll try to do this without too much interruption. So this is in regard to the eight half-days that have never been part of the SVSU calendar. As a parent, I'd like a much better detailed explanation as to why this was added into the calendar without any feedback from families regarding the matter. When Ms. Brudero responded to my inquiry, she stated there was significant support from the field. Can you please expand on this? Was this a survey? Was this discussed with families? Is this documented and on public record? I also believe the SVSU should be transparent on the reason behind the eight and a half days that match the GIST schedule with Arlington exactly. I was told this was due to substitute teacher shortages and the need for additional staff time to plan things like IEP meetings, et cetera. And the half-days have something to do with the Baton Rouge Valley Arlington joining the SVSU. Parents deserve a clear and transparent explanation of this. There's a major childcare crisis in the state. By creating an unexpected situation where childcare is now needed creates an inequitable situation for families in this SU. And no point has the district pointed out specifically, these half-days are on the calendar, and let's be honest, the calendar is hard to read as is. Who is looking for these half-days? And no point has the district worked with local families who would experience the greatest impact to provide transportation and low-cost aftercare. If something is being worked on, why isn't that highlighted in the newsletter? Families deserve truthful, transparent answers. They also deserve to be part of decisions that would have a substantial economic effect on their households. Creating half-days to fit into a ski program schedule which is neither sponsored or paid for by the SVSU is not equitable. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Duffy. It will be noted, and I'm sure response will be forthcoming. Are there other public comments?
Since she was reading something, perhaps she can submit.
Is that, Ms. Duffy, you're still there?
Yes, yeah, I can, I can send that to the staff.
Yep, if you could email that to me, Ms. Duffy, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to finance and operations. We have treasurer's reports from May, June, July, and August. We discussed the treasurer's report for May and according to the minutes, and I noted a change in the total on the May treasurer's report, the cash balance. And the other three months, we're looking to accept. Is there a reason for the change in the cash balance numbers?
I don't have that answer, and I don't see Renee on the, on the meeting.
Not a lot of money, it's only a couple hundred dollars, but I noticed that the bottom line changed.
Yeah, if you allow, I, I will get that answer back to you.
It's just a little thing, but it's one of those little things that's...
I understand.
It's just some trouble. So we have those four months, May, June, July, and August. We need, is there a motion to accept? Motion by Leon, second.
Second.
Second Matt, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no abstentions. Motion carries, the treasurer's reports for those four months are accepted. Policies. We have two to warn and two to adopt. I was always advised that we should do one at a time, so I will ask for a motion to warn 1019, which is non-discriminatory mascots and school branding. Remove, second by Leon, Matt, second, discussion.
No discussion, but justice policy is up for wanting, and we have the public that may be watching this and so forth. I just wanted to briefly say that what this policy was all about, I may, is that the district is to provide a welcome and positive and inclusive learning environment for all students by prohibiting the use of discriminatory school branding, which determines, would undermine the education experience of the members of all the communities. And so that's basically what this policy is about. It has some definitions that define certain things along that line, and it came required, and it had some recommended administrative responses to the policy of Cat Stewart as
Other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of warning 1019, non-discrimination mascots and school branding, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no abstentions. Motion carries 1019 as warned. Next policy is 5300, section 504 in ADA grievance protocol for students. We are asking for a warning on this?
Yes, we are, and I would like to do just what I did similar to the other ones, is to talk about this policy deals with the, the district not to discriminate on the basis of, of the ability of an individual, a person, or, hold on. The district has adopted this interim protocol for the prompting and equitable resolutions of complaints alleging any action prohibited by section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, amended in American Disability Act in 1990, ADA, section 504, and, and the ADA prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability of any programs or activities receiving federal financial assistance. It further goes to the fact that if you do not want to follow the protocol by going to your superior within the school district, it goes to identify that a person may not require to use the protocol and may instead file a complaint directly with the US Department of Education Office and Civil Rights Office for civil rights in Boston, Massachusetts office, and it gave the, it gives the address and so forth in the policy. So this is a required policy that came to us to follow, and it's, deals with those items that I just talked about for a hearing.
We had a motion from Leon, but we have not had a second. A second, Ray, second. Is there any further discussion? Thank you, Leon. In that case, all those in favor of warning 5300, grievance protocol for students, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's 503.
5300.
03, I'm sorry.
5300.
The next one is 500.
Okay, thank you.
You got all those comments, your lottery numbers.
I think, I think the motion passed unanimously.
Okay.
No abstentions.
Okay.
No one in opposition, okay. And 5300 is warned. Next policy is 5003. Prevention of sexual harassment is prohibited by Title IX. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Matt, second Leon, discussion?
This is up for adoption. It's been around through the district and so forth with no changes of adjustments to it, so I won't go any further than that. This will be for the adopted and have it posted on their website once it goes around to the other district.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or abstentions? 5003 has been adopted. 5090 is interrogation or searches of students by law enforcement personnel or social service agencies. Do we have a motion?
Remove.
Motion by Leon, second. Second Matt, discussion?
I wanted to say that this policy is up for adoption, and it, they are, it took us a year, two years to get this policy done after having gone through another, a number of legal reviews and reviews within the schools and so forth, and with administrators to make sure that the best interest of our students was at heart when it came to interrogation and search, search and seizure requirements versus the presence of a law enforcement agency. So I'd like highly, like to have everyone vote for the adoption of this policy.
Further discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting 5090, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or abstentions? 5090 is hereby adopted. Item four is election of a VSBA delegate.
It should be VSBA.
There are several of us that are going to the VSBA convention, and registration is still open if I'm not mistaken. So we need to designate a delegate?
And, and may I, this, I'll be on for, the delegate for the VSBA is for the voting to represent the SVSU district, and I would like to nominate Dick Friend since he's going to be there, and he represented the district in the previous year in this capacity.
A lot of this has to do with finances which are frankly over my head, and it has to do with a number of resolutions that have been proposed by a variety of school districts across the state. I think some were 12 or 13 districts. And those resolutions cover a ton of different things, which I can talk about a little later. And the convention itself will be sort of hinged on how our students are doing, and some of those discussions will be led or will involve students from a variety of districts. So that's what we expect to see. So... You're declaring the nomination.
Well, I nominated it.
I'll be there anyway, so if someone else would like to be nominated, that's fine.
I second the nomination of Dick Friend.
Well, we have a motion, a second. The other discussion?
An enthusiastic nominee. He's falling over with joy.
I should have said that a little different.
It's a good choice. We'll get two votes out of that because I'll be there representing Mount Anthony.
Yes.
Oh, good.
And I think Fran is there.
I think Fran will probably be there, Jackie, if not.
I'm going...
Career Development Center.
Yeah, I'm gonna be there, and one of the things that I'm doing is I'm sitting on right now a committee for, for board governance. We've never had this before, but they're, they're going to have three main points to the board governance, and they're trying to sort out all the recommended things for what boards do. In the past, you know, it, we know what we're supposed to do, but we've never really looked at ourselves and rated ourselves. And so this is an important part of, of this meeting that, that will be held in October.
Right. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or abstentions? Okay, I will propose the delegate. Leon, Jackie will be there, and we'll bring back a report.
On that VSBA note, Jim, will you work with Jim Salzgiver and David Chandler on having them attend, inviting them to attend future SVSU meetings because they are our VSBA regional representatives? And they feel like they don't know as much as they should about what goes on in the SVSU?
We can certainly invite them to, we've never done that before. The SU has never invited regional representatives to the meeting, doesn't mean that we can't. If that was a practice that you did in Arlington, I'd be happy to extend an invitation to them.
I think it would be beneficial, it's hard to ask them to represent our interests if they don't know what our interests are.
I can, I'd be happy to put that on the agenda for the next SU meeting, and make it an agenda item for them to address the board.
And it may be a decision that they also decide to, to reach out to the individual boards, you know, school district boards to attend at that level, but at least at the SU level, it would be good for them. They, they are well-versed in what goes on within the VRSU.
Thank you. Next item is the consent agenda which includes minutes, warrants, leave, of absences, retirements, resignations, and nominations. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Jackie and Matt, second. Discussion.
Well, it's not anything, we have one retiree on here, and always when we see a have a retiree, I like to make sure we send a letter of appreciation to Mayor Durek, accounting manager at Central Office, and she's been there for a number of years. I don't know what the number is.
I'm gonna tell you that in my report.
Yeah, oh, well, I won't steal this thunder, but anyway, we want to make sure we, we recommend, I mean, do a appreciation letter for her or something.
What was our clerk?
That's me.
Jackie.
Oh, good.
Jackie.
Jackie. Jackie, you did write it.
What's Jim has, has put in his two cents, could you take some of that information, Jackie, and put together an appreciation letter?
Will do.
Thank you. Other discussion?
I just have a general comment. I mean, the number of, and this has been discussed, but the number of resignations, nominations, I mean, the list is endlessly long, month after month. I don't know, these are SU positions, I don't know what the vacancy situation is at the individual school level, and what, how concerned our administration is about the turnover and the ability to fill vacancies, but it's, that's a...
I'm gonna speak to that also in my report, Nicole.
Great.
One other comment, I'm hoping, and I'm thinking, you know, that for some of the major assignments that we have up-to-date documented, a job description for them, especially the ones for the Central Office, I was just looking through the ones, and we, we have one for Central Office. I didn't go and look and ask to see them, but I wanted to make sure that this is a point where we should make an effort to have these job descriptions in place and current. That's all I have.
Other discussion? And we have a motion on the table, on the second. All those in favor of approval of this consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions? Motion carries, the consent agenda is approved, which moves us to the superintendent's report.
The first part of my report is gonna be given by Assistant Superintendent Laura Boudreau and Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Melissa Senical.
Let me share my screen, please, Jim. Hey, Jess, can you, can you share my, can you...
Your own screen, yeah, not the... So it's not showing up on my end. I don't know if you got, because the room is the co-host, it's not...
Can you see me, can you see me when you do participants? Can you see Laura Boudreau on the list?
Yeah, and... Yeah, you're there, but it's not letting me make you co-host, which is odd. When I tap you on my screen, try starting your video, and let me see, because it's Nope, it's not. Let me go back to, can I?
Can you do it from the share screen button at the bottom?
On the share screen is whiteboard iPhone, iPad via cable in my desktop.
Well, we're just, we're gonna make sure we'll cover all the pieces of it.
This has not happened before. Let me go to security and see, it may be locked down in there. Share screen, there we go, I got it. Well, I think it says allow participants to share screen.
Yes, you did it. You did it.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience.
There you go.
Thank you.
Think we need to practice more on this new system.
Yeah. So thanks for having us tonight. This is the last presentation in a round that we've done at all board meetings during the month of September. Last year, we started with sharing the different pillars of recovery, and so we shared the social-emotional pillar one and student engagement, which is pillar two, and pillar three is what we presented at each different board and given each board their specific data. We are now presenting the, the district, this is the district perspective, so looking at it through this lens. So this is everything put together, almost. And so the first part, just to remind you, we have some acronyms. ESR stands for Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief. MTSS stands for Multi-Tierred System of Support. CIP stands for Continuous Improvement Plan, and SBAQ stands for Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium. As a reminder, this is all, our continuous improvement plans are connected to our recovery plans. You can always visit our recovery tab on the SVSU website, which is right on the homepage, to, to look at our progress and to provide feedback, which Melissa Senical checks every week. Because this presentation is around academic achievement, we've also included the link to the SVSU's proficiency-based graduation requirements, also be found on the website. So what we're gonna do first is we're gonna jump right into the data piece. Awesome. So if you look, it, for everybody that has paper, it's this, and so it would be key one for presentation one, and if I've seen you before, we've got a little bit different because this is with, this is the data for the SVSU, and it's where the SVSU, at the time when this data was pulled, I'll explain more when we get there. And this is all from the annual snapshot. So what is the annual snapshot? On the second page of the presentation or Q2, the annual snapshot is now the way that Vermont is using the educational quality standards along with a holistic approach to making sure that all of our schools are continuously improving. So no matter where they are, they're always improving. How they do that are multiple measures, which again is different than it was a few years ago, in that we not just do academic performance, but we also address the measure for personalization, high-quality staffing, safe and healthy schools, and investment priorities. P4 has all of the different ways that the state of Vermont measures, and today again, like Laura said, we'll be focusing on academic proficiency. So these are from the content standard performance or SBAQ scores of English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science. You'll notice in a few moments that you won't see any physical education results because that would be the spring that we did not do that due to the pandemic. We also have our results for English Language Proficiency. Those are our results from our newcomers and how they did. Again, these are our English language learners. Graduation rate, and the next, so there's, that's where they get the results from. So how did we do? So this would be from school year that ended on 20 to 2021, so spring of '21. At that point, when the annual snapshot was posted for the state of Vermont, Arlington and Ziegler was not included under the SVSU. That would be changing. So what you see right now is not, or it is only the, the old SVSU. I can say old, but that's not very nice. Former, former, there you go, that's not a nice way to put it, is it? A former. But anyway, so here are the results from, from spring of 2021 for English Language Arts as compared to us Vermont at the same time, and we would not be meeting. For math, we're also not meeting, so we have room for growth. For science, we are approaching. Progress towards English proficiency, again, that would be our newcomers. Those are our people that we have from Belgium, Afghanistan, and all sorts of places that are new, new Americans, and they are meeting proficiency. Graduation rate, we're also meeting. This also notes again what I said before, the physical education assessment was canceled by the state of Vermont during that testing window, and that's why you don't have results for physical education in this year. We also have results for how well do our schools provide environments where students feel healthy, safe, and supported in achieving their goals, and we are exceeding performance in that, in that domain. Personalization, this is how well do our students provide authentic engagement opportunities to shape their own learning. This would be flexible pathway participation and offerings for Act 77 that we have been having for... that we have been having for a while, so how are we doing with that? And we're meeting. Why in this do you not see any longitudinal reporting? It's because the ALE has asked us to not do that. You're looking at page seven of the presentation. And they felt as though the the conditions of test administration during this very, very difficult time, we must consider the challenges for interpreting any results for growth or trends. So we'll get back to making sure that you're presented with not just how students are doing proficiency, but how they're doing with growth, once we can get those and rely on those trending lines if they're valid. And my very last one, and you're also patient, committing to this so many times, so thank you. They want to make sure that we don't use the snapshot to rank old schools or compare schools to each other to shame or blame schools, or define accountability as only an assessment score, but to fully represent our school system and try to grow. So when we now flip back and we start to look, what do we do with this information? What we've provided with you, and again, at every board meeting this month, we've given each district specifically what's used for instructional resources. And again, because of budget season, we want you to pay close attention to the funding sources, because these are the discussions we want to have as we're moving into budget season. So you can see across the board, I've broken it out by grade span for K through three, the resources that we're using, and you can see a combination of the ESSER grant, locally funded opportunities. I'm going to highlight, because I want to give you an example of an SVSU-funded resource. So Reading Street is used at the K through three level in the SVU, EST, and Arlington. And so when we're doing our curriculum budget, that's one thing we're thinking about is what is the money we need to put into that to support it to run for the next school year, which right now is the platform, the digital platform that we need access to.
Laura, before you get too far, Ray had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ray.
Previous, I don't remember what's personalization means.
Oh. If we go back to, that's why, what's this page? Which is also class page four of presentations. And it gives that, how many of our students participated in those flexible pathways? Which would be things like dual enrollment, college enrollment, that's just one example of some flexible pathways. Are we offering these? We have to, we have to give to the state, all of those, and then oh, it's okay, I want to talk inside. Favorite topics. And as we continue on, we've again highlighted, so we just want you to have access to these resources as you're moving into budget season, so you again can see how we're using our resources. And then across all the grade spans, we have, again, different resources that are being used. And then it's also, we know that to support our professional staff and our support staff in supporting our learners, we need to make sure that we have ongoing professional learning. So again, we've given you examples of the professional learning that we're offering, linked to evidence-based practices and goals in our continuous improvement plan. I'd like to highlight, again, when I look at this, you can see that a lot of the opportunities we're offering for professional learning, we are trying as much as we possibly can to use our grant money. So you can see, you'll see a combination of the title money and ESSER. And the final piece that we present every year to this board is a title requirement. It's also a, an SVSU policy 5010, is that we hold Title I parent meetings at all of our schools, which are all school-wide. And we have completed that process. It ended at the high school last Thursday. And so I just want to just report out to you that 10 meetings were held at 10 sites. We, I want
10 meetings.
We had 10 Title I, we had 10, thank you, right, we had 10 Title I meetings, one at each site. Last year, we had a total of 31 families and community members. This year, we had 221. So that's quite an increase in the involvement of families and community members. Each agenda highlighted the importance of outlining how the school and the family would work together. We shared that data was being shared at all board meetings, and we will post it online so families can reach out, look at data, ask us questions. We, the best part of the meeting, I always think the best part of the meeting is when the building administrator, we sit with the building administrator, and we just, we say to whoever comes to the meeting, give us your ideas, give us feedback. What do you want to see? How do you want us to use your money? Do you have any questions for us? And then we've given you some examples of some of the overviews of the comments that we've received. I have to say, our schools are getting very savvy in how they're collecting information. So my one example would be, and just because it's fresh in my mind, because it was last Thursday, the high school, Mount Anthony High School tried something different this year, where they advertised for the Title I meeting. They also sent out a Google form, so parents could give feedback electronically, and they also sent an email. They did give feedback through each of those means. And so what we do with building administrators is we share those ideas to increase parent engagement. So that is our presentation for tonight, and if anybody has any questions for us.
You have a bunch of comments. Overview of
Yes. That was, that, so what is, that, we took all the comments we received from all of the meetings, and we gave you a summary. We take those back, so those are from all different schools. So the principals all received that feedback to use with their school leadership teams, but we just gave you a snippet so you could you could see what the conversations looked like. They ranged from field trip opportunities to some ideas at the secondary level, and again, that's what so laying out a title meeting, that's what makes it fun, is that it's a conversation. The last part of the title meeting is a conversation, so those are a lot of the topics we discuss.
Right, and I just like to want, because on the P4 page, when we talk about safety and health of the school and the climate of the students, and I I'm trying to see how, we were doing student surveys, staff surveys, but behind COVID and the time out of school and so forth, there has been, I mean, in all indications, a horrendous amount of student activity in the wrong direction for having been out of school. And so a lot of the money that you were getting, and what effect that has on them learning, could come to play, and I'm saying, okay, one of the one, the last one on that, it was student activities and student homework help at the secondary level and so forth along that line, maybe something that would come pretty much to the top. And it says, can title money be used to support social and emotional learning?
Yes, yes, so, yeah, that was a great, that actually ended up being a great conversation, and we can use title money for that, especially Title IV. So actually, we have quite a few, my one example is the trauma drummer, who now I think has been everywhere in our district, so we use Title IV money, and Steve Ferris is our consultant, and he has worked with, so he now only works with music teachers, but he works with classroom teachers. We had an interventionist at Arlington that took it this summer as well. And then we're building infrastructure, so then in the context of schools, they can come together, and that becomes a tool in the tool belt to help some kids with to address social-emotional learning, to help them regulate so they can learn. My other example with title money that came up in conversation was a great question from an audience member around, can we use, how do you use title money for tutoring? What does that look like? I appreciate the guidelines the state provides for us, because title money has to be, can be used for tutoring, has to be a Vermont-certified teacher, so I appreciate the standard. And so they need to have an area of expertise, and it can be done before school, it can be done after school, and it can be done remotely, as long as we have more than one student in a session. So those were great questions, and we were able to provide feedback about those resources.
I just wanted to highlight, have you highlight that, because to say to parents, help is on the way for the students. And so the students that help is on the way for the time that they've had to transform out of school and go through all of the COVID things and so forth. And the learning environment that they got affected in is now being supported by the State Department of Education, and SVSU is still working right now close hand to put people in place to provide help to bring them back to a level, so the parents stay tuned.
That's great.
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, can title money, you mentioned tutoring after school or before school. Sometimes the very same kids who need tutoring don't have transportation before or after school. So can title money be used for that as well?
We are, it's a great question, Jackie. We are going to be starting using some of our recovery money. Late buses, if you will, like a 4:30 bus run being worked on with our principals from the middle school, high school. Hopefully, that's going to start within the next couple of weeks, so that is the plans.
Thank you.
Elementary schools don't need that option?
There's not, is, is, yes, they do, but we're starting in the middle of the high school first, and see how that run works. There's a lot further activities after school. This is being done initially as an equity piece because of children's inability to attend after-school activities because of lack of transportation. Any other questions for Laura or Melissa, and then I'm going to move on to the next topic? One of the things I wanted to talk to you about is the safety in our schools. We're experiencing, just like, you know, educator shortages, there's shortages of police officers and deputy sheriffs. So where we once had SROs in some of our elementary schools and detail from Bennington Police in our high school, that's coming up short also, because of the same struggles to fill their ranks. So we are fortunate to have the SU, to have you support the position of a school safety, the SVSU Safety Coordinator, and Vic Malani, I asked him to come here today to to give you an overview of what his role is for our district, which is taking on even more now with the lack of what I just told you, we don't have SROs. But, you know, his role, as I see it, is to give guidance, support, and training to all our schools in the SU. So a big part of his job is training our staff for what we hope will never happen. So with that, I'm going to do Vic Malani.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's my pleasure to come before you this evening and tell a little bit about what we are doing as far as safety, and give you an update on our progress. First of all, I'm delighted to learn that we've exceeded expectations as far as our school communities, our students feeling safe in our schools. Nationwide, as you know, there's a heightened sense of awareness on the part of parents regarding violence that have been committed in our schools nationwide. When parents send their children to school each day, they have certain expectations. And their expectations are that their students will receive a quality education. But more importantly, that can't happen unless it's in a safe environment. As school board members, as educators, as parents and grandparents, we have to accept that responsibility. We have to assume that duty of care for those students when they arrive at the doorsteps of their individual schools. And I can tell you, the superintendent, and myself, and the administrators who serve as incident commanders at each of those schools, take this responsibility very seriously. And we do everything we can on a daily basis to ensure that that environment in which these students are sent to learn is safe and make you safe. As Mr. Colteen just mentioned, it's no secret that across the country, at every level of law enforcement, federal, state, and local, we find that law enforcement agencies are struggling to attract qualified candidates. And that means that certainly they are stretched from the limit to be able to cover whatever responsibilities they have as an individual law enforcement agency. What that translates to, as Mr. Colteen indicated, is that certainly we no longer have availability of these law enforcement officers from Bennington Police Department, from the sheriff's department, be able to assist us in SROs and details, which were assigned to those schools. Which means that we have to work even more diligently to ensure and foster that sense of safety on the part of faculty, staff, of students, and make those parents feel at ease as they send those students off to school each day. So what I wanted to do is go over some of the things that I'm doing in order to achieve that goal. I have to tell you that the superintendent, myself, routinely have discussions. We keep one another updated constantly as far as any issues that might constitute a safety concern in our schools. So taking you to that list, if you refer to the handout, as Mr. Colteen mentioned, it's so important to familiarize ourselves and our staff with what constitutes a threat. And to that end, annually, I offer a two-hour threat assessment training to faculty and staff throughout the district, and make them aware of the different types of threats, what constitutes a threat, should they become aware of a threat, and what is the protocol for them to follow. In addition to that, we, in all of our schools, certainly have a secure perimeter. But there were certain people in the form of front desk personnel, whether they're receptionists or secretaries, that have the responsibility of admitting people to school, whether they be parents, vendors, visitors. And certainly, they have to be trained as to what might constitute suspicious behavior. What might be a type of behavior that someone who is attempting to enter our schools by the exhibit that would prevent them from being allowed entry into our schools. So that is a training that I offer to all of those people that we refer to as the gatekeepers, as the people who would allow entry into the schools. Another thing that is so important is what are called emergency operation plans, that I think you might be familiar with. Every one of our schools has an emergency operation plan that would constitute the protocol to follow in any type of emergency. And certainly, the ones that we are most concerned with, the most concerning is training as far as the possibility of what to do in an active shooter situation. And we certainly have drills throughout the course of the year in both active shooter, as well as fire regress. And again, so we are training our faculty and staff constantly as to how to respond should any of these types of situations evolve. So annually, I work with the incident commanders in each of those schools, and we revise and update those emergency operation plans. The next thing that is, Mr. Colteen, and I mentioned a few minutes ago, the fact now that we have a less presence of law enforcement in our schools, it's more important that I be visible in those schools. So I'm spending more time visiting those schools now to talk to faculty, staff, and students to foster that sense of safety. And again, we're going to continue to do that. We want to make sure that anybody in the role of security, whether it be at the high school or myself, is readily identified. anybody in the role of security, whether it be at the high school or myself, is readily identifiable as such. So we wear uh badges uh on lanyards around our neck. So again, just to let anybody in the school know, the entire school community, that we are there. We are there should we be needed. So we're going to continue to do that and try and be more visible uh just to try and offset the fact that law enforcement is less available. It would be no surprise to you to know that uh certainly I received many, many emails and phone calls uh from all sorts of uh walks of life. Uh certainly, I receive them from parents. I receive them from faculty members and staff members uh who have concerns about safety. And my responsibility is to be able to talk with them, to assure them that we have taken steps to do everything we can to ensure their safety and the safety of the school community in which they work. I just put a little note here. Uh you can imagine that every time um there's any type of mass shooting or school shooting, obviously, these types of concerns uh really explode. And again, uh we applaud to every one of them. Uh again, it's our objective to make everybody in the schools, we feel, if they're safe. We certainly know that if somebody doesn't feel safe, they can't work to their full capacity to be able to learn in the classroom. So certainly, we have to meet that objective, and it's our responsibility to do that. Certainly, I do uh visit schools uh and when they're practicing these fire regress drills and these what we call option-based active shooter drills. Uh I work with them to make sure that we're following state mandates as far as the times of the year that those types of drills have to be uh conducted, and also they're following them uh the way uh the state has mandated them to do so. Each of our buildings, each of our incident commanders has a building safety committee. Uh periodically, I would be asked to attend those safety meetings for questions and concerns. So that again is another one of my responsibilities. We have an S V S U Safety Committee uh that I chair that comprises uh the uh administrators at S V S U, uh people in various roles uh in the S V S U. And we need periodically to consider any types of concerns that have been brought to our attention. The other responsibility is uh athletic events. Uh we again are having less uh police presence uh at these athletic athletic events that we've had in the past. So we are uh making every effort to ensure that we have high school security uh personnel. If need be, uh either at the high school or the middle school, uh we collaborate with the Athletic Director to make sure that uh he uh feels comfortable uh with security at each of our athletic events. Certainly, if there's any type of uh issue that requires uh an immediate response, uh there's an imminent situation uh of a threat, certainly, um I respond uh to that. And finally, uh I also deal with residency uh types of inquiries uh at the superintendent's direction. Uh I would investigate uh any types of residency inquiry. Uh again, we've had numerous instances of of that this year. So that kind of kind of is a quick overview. I certainly uh like to answer any questions that you might have. I'm always available through email uh or uh extra cell phone. And as I say, the superintendent and myself uh correspond uh very often to discuss any type of issues. In fact, we had two discussions today uh relating to some safety concerns. So it's kind of an ongoing uh type of uh discussion. So uh if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those.
Sir. This this just happened to be right on time because I think I uh I mentioned earlier, one of the policies I talked about search and seek during the school climate and school or in school. The modifications that are being made here now are modifications that are are welcomed by parents and students. And those modifications are uniform law enforcement in the community and in the school puts the same kind of threat of fear to students that affect uh them out in the community. And the school climate is supposed to be different in the sense that students are allowed to have the freedom to be able to understand, make a mistake, and not be subject to the same kind of treatment when they have grown up and got out in the community as a parent. And so the presence of a a uniform sort of environment was taking away the separation of the educational environment and the adult environment after you leave. So I'm glad to see that we are not having uniformed officers in. I'm glad to see that one of the things that we were just talking about last week and for and and another at Career Development Center, vice versa, is that how do we get the training down to all of the teachers? They are the firsthand individuals to to talk to the students to figure out what's wrong, why you're not learning? Why why aren't you, why are you jumping and you're scared? You a re one person won't be able to get that. But if the teachers are the staff and the individual able to understand that and see that, those things can be passed on from that point. So education of all the individuals in annually in the district is a good thing.
Well, thank you, Leon. Uh let me just comment on a couple of things you said. You're right on target. Uh you you might be aware of the fact that there's a there's a major controversy in the country as to the role of SROs in our schools. And many, many individuals have expressed concerns, just as you did. They didn't feel comfortable with that uniform presence. So uh again, we certainly, although we want to make sure our schools are safe and secure, we don't have that now, as a matter of fact. That's why we want to go in there. But we want to be visible to the school community as where there is security. You know, we're not uniform, we're not police, we are security. So uh again, I think we're filling that role, but that, thank you for bringing that to our attention. And again, your your second point, uh you're absolutely right. If 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 students are acting out because they don't feel safe, they're certainly not learning. And they're disrupting the classroom and the learning of others. So we have to address that immediately. And as I say, you know, certainly a major obligation is to deliver quality education. And from what Laura and Melissa said, certainly, we're doing that. But on the other hand, if students don't feel safe, they can't work to their full potential, and we have to address that. We have to make sure that they feel safe. So that's why uh the superintendent and myself, uh we constantly look at this, we constantly look at, how can we do things better? But this is what we're doing currently. We feel very comfortable with that. And again, to your last point, uh Leon, certainly, we are offering this training. We want these teachers to be aware of what constitutes a threat and how to respond to that. So thank you for those comments.
And just one additional question. So with your training that you're doing with the schools and the teachers, are you also training for like non-confrontational de-escalation training, like the Wyclanders Lansky method or something like that?
Yes, sir. So that's all part of it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Uh thank you, Vic. And and I I want to say publicly that I uh it makes my job easier that the S U Board supports this position. I know that it's a resource that has, as Vic told you, he and I talked twice today. Uh we frequently are in communication or meeting on on preventative issues uh that I just, I I uh I rest a little easier knowing that we have Vic on the job, and I'll I'll say that to you, Vic. So thank you. Yeah, some other items I'd like to discuss. I'm sorry.
A last item investigated, superintendent's request any residency inquiry. What's that like?
Okay, that that essentially uh results from someone who might be living out of district and sending somebody to our schools. Uh when we become aware of that, certainly, we have to be responsive to that. Uh the taxpayers of the district have the right to certainly uh have people who are not living in the district. They don't have the right to have those students attending. So uh we do have uh annually several instances of that. People move out of district, they continue to send their children to school here. So uh I conduct the investigation, I submit my report to the superintendent uh to render a decision as to how to proceed.
Thank you.
And that resource is available to any of the schools in the S U that, you know, or any of the boards that are uh challenging residency issues. Jonathan Phipps are the S V S U uh Equity Coordinators at an event at the high school this evening. So I'll address what I wanted him to address to the board. The Vermont School Board Association, the Vermont uh Superintendent's Association and the Agency of Education sponsor for the second year now, uh Equity Mini Grants. And we are applying for one, but one of the requirements due October seventeenth. One of the requirements for that is to have um school board vote to uh participate in this grant application along with the superintendent. We got a grant last year, so I'm not too sure, you know, I don't know if that will count against us in the second round that they'll only give it to schools, uh supervisory union, school districts, or schools that um didn't receive them in the first round, but that isn't going to stop us from applying. Our grant is ready. Uh what we propose to you, it's up to a five thou up to five thousand dollar mini grant. Uh we used it last year to support our our Juneteenth celebration. We would like to continue that. We would like to expand that celebration and uh move it to a a location that would uh allow more participation from the public. And that's what uh we're proposing in the grant. What I'm asking tonight is if the board would go on record as voting to partner with us to apply for this grant.
We have a motion for raise and from Leon is there for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of partnering to support this grant, this equity grant, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Sentences. Vote carries.
Thank you. We will submit that grant by the deadline, which is October seventeenth. Couple of, I think, fun housekeeping things, and then I'll get into uh the discussion about uh personnel. You know, as we transition to this new building, we're trying to make it get people adjusted to it and get feedback from them. So one of the activities that we did was called Summer in the City, and it was uh our director of um our in Public Information Coordinator, Katie West, produced passports, and it listed many, many businesses and uh institutions in the downtown area. And uh we had groups go out and had to get their passport, their passport signed from different area businesses, kind of get everyone familiar with their with their new surroundings. It was it was a fun activity. When everybody came back, then we did an activity to receive be feedback on our new office and how staff was adjusting to it and what we could do to make uh things go smoother. Some of the things that we heard were the noise level, um you know, getting used to working in cubicles. Temperature that uh some were saying they felt too cold. No place to hang their coats, uh there, no hooks to hang their coats. The brightness, it can be the 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 banks of windows on either side were very bright. Um so I can say that we purchased uh white noise machines to try and help with the conversation. Uh window shades have been installed in the bank of side windows that will deal with the brightness issue, and people couldn't see their computer screens. So that's been taken care of. Uh the coat hooks uh were audited and um will be hopefully installed soon so that people can in their cubicle have a place to uh hang their coats. And our director of um operations is experimenting with different temperature settings. Because there's at least four or five zones in the building, so trying to to deal with that. We still experience are experiencing some uh tech issues, uh particularly maybe around our copiers and faxing, but uh I do think that um most are being answered. And again, I can't thank our tech staff enough enough for their outstanding response that they have given us uh as we navigate this change. So thank you. Thank you to the tech department on that. But speaking of tech, if board members are still experiencing email issues, uh please reach out to me or contact my administrative assistant, Amy Goslin, and she can connect you with tech with someone in the tech department to help you if you're still experiencing uh email issues. Some of the challenges that are coming up, uh we will be beginning negotiations this year with the Arlington Education Association, with the S V S U Support Staff, and with S V S U Principals. Uh so that's some major negotiations that will begin. And we have, you know, everything from contract merger issues and discussions to all the nuts and bolts that always go in negotiations, but just, you know, we should be aware of that. And next month, which is just a few days away, uh we really will begin our budget season. Our Director of Finance, October, typically is the month that our Director of Finance and S U administrators will meet with principals to build their budget. And then by November, uh mid-November, and uh then really in December, uh multiple budget meetings with all the boards to get that. So that that all that work is is starting, starting up. One of the board members mentioned Mary Buak's retirement. Um I don't usually address the retirements because we have so many great and valuable employees who move on, but this one is special. Mary Buak has been with the Southwest Vermont Supervisory Union for a very long time. And she may, she may be angry at me for saying this, but her date of hire was September twenty-sixth, nineteen seventy-two. She has been with the Su the Southwest Vermont Supervisory Union for fifty years. So I really want to congratulate her and thank her. It will be a loss of historical knowledge that the S V S U uh uh will be impacted by, and that impact is substantial for what what she knows with her and the knowledge that she has and that she has gained in those fifty years of employment here. So I take a moment to thank Mary. And I'm uh Jackie, if you want more information on her accomplishments, I'd be happy to talk to you, for you to draft your letter. Open positions across the S V S U uh continues to present challenges to us. Our principals and our H R staff and the S V S U Administration are working together. But there are a few quick solutions, particularly in the math, science, and special education areas. That really shouldn't be a surprise. This week, uh we did have an administrative activity using a model of training that uh many of our administrators experienced when they went through the Wantington Program. And we used that to deeply study this issue. I believe we did come away with some positive solutions that H R and the S V S U Administration were excited about that uh the possibilities to generate additional teachers that we need. And we're not the only, you first, we're not the only one um experiencing this. Uh Vermont A O E has announced, uh Agency of Education announced that they're working with a with a consulting firm to conduct a study of the current state of Vermont education workforce. And they'll be conducting online focus groups on educator shortages. And I intend that our S U will be participating in those focus groups. We're uh one of the largest S U's in the state of Vermont with the most uh one of the largest employee groups, and so the numbers are proportionally large. Um I did ask uh H R Director Nick Galt to join us. Um he's going to open up his mic. Um, I did ask, uh, HR Director Nick Galt to join us. Um, he's going to open up his mic. He might also have young children in the background, but, uh, he could be a little bit more specific on, uh, what we're experiencing on, on positions. Nick, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. So one thing I, I wanted to note regarding what folks are seeing on the consent agenda for this meeting is, um, keep in mind, this is a reflection of everything that's occurred since the last board meeting, which was June twenty-second, um, the end of last school year. So this is always a very large consent agenda in terms of the number of nominations as well as resignations that occur. Um, is it larger than a normal year? Absolutely. Um, but for an SU, uh, with, with a full-time staff of over four hundred, just for this SVSU board, it's not unusual to see, you know, fairly large numbers of new hires for this first board meeting of the year. But to, to Jim's point, we are, we know we are facing larger than normal, um, numbers of vacancies in our schools. Um, it's a reflection of what we're seeing at the state level and the national level. You can easily find, um, data from any number of sources that quotes the current teacher turnover rate at about sixteen percent annually. And they're expecting that number to, to rise as a result of, of COVID, um, related, you know, uh, COVID-related things as well as other factors, anywhere from, uh, anywhere up to twenty-five percent, um, depending on the source that you look at. So a normal rate of sixteen percent turnover for, for an SU of four hundred employees, just for the SVSU, we're, we're seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred employees overall. So you can, you can see some really large numbers that fall within, within the kind of statistical norm that we're seeing everywhere in the country. Uh, again, to echo things that Jim said, there are, there are specific areas where we're seeing the severe, the, the shortages most severely. Those being math, um, science and special education, as well as some other professional positions, SLPs, um, behavioral positions and things of that nature. We do have quite a few vacancies, but we are working on a number of strategies to try to fill them and to be, to get creative, um, and think in ways that we have not had to think about before. So I don't know if there are any specific questions for me. I was hoping to just provide a little bit of context, um, that yes, these are large numbers. They are larger than usual, but they're also, um, we should anticipate relatively large numbers, especially this time of year for, for an SU.
They represent a large period of time between meetings.
Correct.
Are there any questions, Nick, or myself on this issue?
I think Jackie's got her hand up.
Yep.
I was wondering if you have tried Front Page Forum. Uh, Front Page Forum, uh, goes not only to Bennington, but to Shaftesbury and all the surrounding areas. And it's a, a vehicle that was put into place about ten years ago. And, uh, you can buy things from there, you can write ads. Uh, one of the companies that I worked for, uh, always put an ad in there, uh, to, uh, to get people to work for them. Uh, for knee testing, for instance, and people responded to it. So it would be a great place to, uh, put out feelers, especially for subs and for teachers.
I'm writing it down as we speak. I am, I am signed up for it in my local community, and I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, we're looking for, uh, all, except the session that we did with our administrators, Jackie, provided things just like what you said, that we put more people in the room for more ideas. Brainstorming session, for lack of a better term, that, uh, you know, produce some positive results for ideas, like, just like you suggested for other ways to, uh, including some creativity like, um, the possibility of using, um, part-time teachers, uh, people who, remote teachers to teach certain subjects. Bring back some retirees, but not full-time, like we'd be willing just to teach one section, one class. Things that we haven't, you know, really done before because we, our mindset has always been, you know, a teacher comes in at seven-thirty and they go home at three-thirty and they teach five classes, have a prep and a lunch, you know? That type, that, that's the structure that we all know. And we are thinking outside the box for ways to get around that, to get people who may be interested in coming in to help us out, but not in the traditional way.
Right. And, and retired teachers, uh, would welcome the fact that they came in to teach one class.
Right. So that, those are all, those are some of the ideas that came through, through this. And, uh, when I said that, uh, HR and our principal is going to be following up now with the strategies for where that goes from there.
Yes. And, and when I put it, when you put it on Front Page Forum, you should a- also underline that fact that one class or a full-day class.
I, I will say to that specific point, we have, I'm proud to say we have five retired teachers who have come back to teach this year. Some in a five full-day, full-time capacity and some in a part-time capacity. But that's more than we've ever had and doesn't sound like a big number, but five makes a really big difference.
And we would welcome more.
Absolutely.
No, I was just curious about the, the number of vacancies that you're looking at right now. So that was.
Nick, would you, I, I don't think we have.
Oh yeah, that's something I prepared, you know?
That's okay.
I, when I look quickly, I think.
I've given them to the individual boards, Nicole, when this past month I've told them, but I don't have it in the aggregate.
I, I would say it's not unreasonable. Yeah. I mean, that being said, I would say it's not unreasonable to say the number could be near fifty out of roughly eight hundred.
Everything from custodian to, um,
Bus drivers.
Bus drivers.
To paraprofessionals, SLPs, social workers, counselors, nurses.
Actual content classroom teachers, the shortages seem more severe at middle and high school right now than our elementary. Is, yeah.
Fifty for the SVSU and member districts or?
I, I believe, and that's a very rough estimate. I'm just glancing at a couple of spreadsheets I have in front of me. I could get to very specific numbers. I'd be happy to do that, but I would say fifty would be a, a fairly conservative guess overall.
Out of somewhere close to like over seven hundred and fifty positions.
Correct.
Possibly fifty opened.
Fifty vacancies that you had to fill, or is that fifty vacancies you have still?
Would say that's fifty vacancies we have still. Some of those are full-time, part-time. It's, it's a mix. And again, it's, it's a very quick.
And there are some, there are some, um, teachers in the pipeline and staff members rather, I should say, in the pipeline to be filled right now. Our principals have been, they do have some nomination forms coming that they've been working for, but we still need more.
Correct. And that wouldn't be accounted for in that just quick, quick calculation.
I, I was looking at Mary's resignation letter and, uh, I see that there is a request for compensation for unused vacation personal sick leave. Are we doing that?
Yes, we are. That is, uh, something that exists in teacher contracts, ESP, educational support contracts, as well as non-union contracts.
I brought that up just because I saw that request and I wanted to be sure.
It, it's, it's just the formalization of it. Yeah. It's just the formalization of they asked for it and then as long as they, you know, did it by the deadline, it, different contracts have different deadlines. But yes, it routinely happens.
Only in the, in the teaching profession of the staffing of the administrative area. We have the same problem in school boards. And I just wanted to point it out down here, down three school board members. One from Powell, one from Bennington and one from Woodford. And we don't seem to be getting any, any budgets anywhere in those areas. And I know that there's probably some others out there that we just can't get school board members.
That, uh, concludes my report. Unless anyone has questions for me, I'd be happy to take them.
Other questions for Jim? In that case, I'm going to cherish your port. First of all, thanks to Jackie for, uh, you followed up on that governance. I'm going to get the title of this wrong.
Governance.
Anyway, um, she and producer report, um, summarizing what she found there. Thank you to Jackie. Thanks to Nicole for staying on top of the regional ESBA issues. The agenda, a little note on the agenda, on the top of the agenda, it says that we meet in the central conference room and in the upstairs conference room. I'm sorry. There are still people who want to know why there's nobody parking over at central office. And I would assume that if people want to go as members of the public to attend the meetings, they're still waiting outside a locked door. They don't realize it's over here. So if the agenda could list a location, that might cover that.
I'll make sure that correction happens.
Jim already commented on, uh, the mini grants, which I was going to talk about. There is a governor's school safety conference on November second from nine to four. It's at the DoubleTree Hilton in Burlington. If anyone is interested, you can go to the VSBA site and register for that. I don't know any more of the particulars about it for meals or any other details. I will be going to the VSBA conference on the twentieth and twenty-first. And there is also a webinar as a follow-up to that on November second from twelve to one. If you tie into that VSBA website. Some of the stuff that will be, um, talked about at the conference has to do with a number of resolutions that have been submitted by a number of school districts, that have to do with public funding, has to do with, um, school safety um, and governance and universal meals. We will also be participating in sessions, um, to find out how we think our students are doing. And some of those sessions will involve student participation and student leadership. So, um, we will get you a report or you can follow up with the webinar on November second if you choose to do that. We still have to do an evaluation on the superintendent. And Jim needs to provide us with, uh, a list of his goals for this year. We have not completed the past year's, uh, evaluation. Our evaluation team, uh, includes, um, myself, Jackie Kelly, Nicole and Ray.
I'd be happy to try and find a date to set that I can meet with you and give you what, propose you a draft of my goals.
That would be good. Um, we really need to schedule meetings and get going on this if I could. If Ray is willing to set up meetings that will do a whole lot better than what I've accomplished in the past year. Is that?
I could, um, I could, uh, have Amy send out an email to you with, I'll look at my calendar, what dates I'm available is, so we're not conflicting with other meetings. And she can send it out to the evaluation board and we'll see if we can find a mutual date that we're all available. Would that work?
Yeah, great.
Thanks.
Would be good. Uh, thank you.
Okay.
And just a quick note on nominations. I know there's a lot of them that were included in there. But, um, some of these folks you want to get on the job, they have other opportunities besides in the SVSU. So the sooner we sign people up and sign contracts, the sooner we are able to fill positions. So, um, that represents some of the reasons that, uh, we have so many nominations. That's all I have to say. Uh, are there other?
It's not another. It's, it's under the comment, but the objective is to try to have the meetings all here at this new location now. Because, uh, if you have meetings in a lot of other places, you don't have the, the ability to use the, uh, the Zoom system and adequately hear and communicate with all the other members. So we're trying to work and try to get all the meetings to be here at, at this location as possible.
Will that include committee meetings?
Most certainly does if we can. So.
Second conference room, Jackie, also has the same, which is smaller than the room in, but has the same Zoom capability set up in it.
I know, I, I attended a, a committee meeting for the Spinelli Field and I could hardly hear anybody, but it was up at the.
I think those meetings should move here. Yep.
Great. Thank you.
Other issues to be brought forward for the board?
We are adjourned.
We have a motion to adjourn from Leon. Second?
Second.
I see none in opposition. Thank you, folks. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Nick.
Good night and thank you all.
Cat TV is celebrating thirty years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next thirty years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.